And make sure it's on silent or vibrate. Looks like our meeting is, should be rather, uh, short here. It don't look like too many major things on here. We're all good?
Yes.
Good to do it to say that.
You good over there, Mr. Taylor? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Procham? Mr. Galloway, you ready?
Yes.
Mr. Durn?
I'm ready.
All right, good deal. All hearts and minds clear? Good evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor in Commission. This will serve as the work session for March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. And as always, we're gonna have the city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis, to lead us through it. Mr. Davis, how are you doing? Doing well, mayor and council, hope y'all doing well. Uh, the first item is item one, found on page three, review of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Mr. Durn?
Consent.
Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Mayor Procham? Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent.
What?
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor? Next item, Mr. City Manager. All right, next item is item two, found on page fifteen. Discuss approval of the City of Ethics, uh, recertification, uh, Ms. Winata, uh, voter.
Good evening, everyone, I'm not contagious, so. Feel good.
Your name is, your name is not contagious? Okay.
Today, but no.
It's not contagious, okay.
I am not, so please listen up, this is all you gonna get. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, this is to approve the City Ethics Certified Recertification. Every four years, uh, GMA has us to do, um, a re, a certificate, for us to be certified as a City of Ethics. Um, they do, um, we have in here the resolution that you all just signed. Um, and it talks about the five things that we're definitely, uh, adopting, which would be serve others, not ourselves. Use resources with efficiency and econo, uh, economy. Treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents. And create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. So I'm asking you all that you approve by signing the resolution for us to send it in and that we can be, um, known by GMA as the City of Ethics.
Mr. Durn, you're. Mr. Galloway? I'm all about ethical. Mayor Procham?
Consent, we've served as a certified City of Ethics for many years now, so we might as well continue.
Good deal. Ms. McNeil?
Consent agenda, yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Winata.
Next item is item three, found on page twenty-eight, discuss and conduct a public hearing for alcoholic beverage application for the Spivey Catfish House LLC doing business as Hardware House. Georgia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have an application, um, as city manager said, from the, uh, Catfish House doing business as a Hardware House for an alcohol license for, um, liquor, beer, and wine at the new location at three ten South Madison Avenue. Tonight, um, well, we have vetted it out, police department, everything checked out, okay? So from our office standpoint there and get standing for that license, but tonight calls for the, uh, public hearing and then the approval during the seven o'clock. I'm sorry, regular meeting.
Good deal. Commissioner Tate, lead us through it? Yes.
Yes.
Carrie Ford, Mr. Bailey?
Carrie Ford.
Ms. McNeil?
Take it forward.
Mayor Procham?
Consent.
Uh, after Carrie Ford.
Oh, Mr. B. Vogelbaum, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Galloway?
Carrie Ford.
Mr. Durn?
Carrie Ford.
Next item, thank you. Same thing with item four, item four, found on page thirty-one, is discuss and hold a public hearing in the regular meeting for the alcoholic beverage application for a Ha, on Ha nine LLC doing business as USA Discount Beverage. Georgia?
Thank you, um, this is, um, as city manager said, for discount beverage located on Gordon, uh, down across from the fire station area. Um, they're doing a management change, so they're putting in, uh, license, uh, requests, everything vets out, okay? Um, just like the first one, it's ready for the, um, public hearing tonight and in your approval.
Mr. Taylor, again?
Me, Carrie Ford.
Carrie Ford, Mr. Bailey?
Carrie Ford.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, take it forward.
Mayor Procham?
I'll take it forward.
Mr. Galloway?
Carrie Ford.
Excuse me. Mr. Durn?
Take it forward.
Good deal. Mr. City Manager, next item? Next item is item five, found on page thirty-four. Like the other ones, if allowed, this will be discussed and then the regular meeting, hold, uh, have a first reading to amend the community work program for the City of Douglas into twenty eighteen joint comprehensive plan. Georgia?
Um, from time to time, with different grant applications, as we began to write them, we realized that our comprehensive plan may not have enough details on some of the grant applications. So there's a need for us to make an amendment to add more language where it pertains to, um, Roundtree Park, Eastside Park, Huckabee Complex, and the soccer, uh, complex. Um, so that, um, some of the grant applications we have already submitted, and one we're working on now for Eastside Park. So this would give us better leverage as a plan-first community with having this adopted into our plan. So the first reading would be at tonight's meeting as well.
Mr. Taylor?
Carrie Ford.
Mr. Bailey?
Carrie Ford.
Ms. McNeil? Mayor Procham?
So, I mean, you said first reading?
First reading of the, um, amendment.
I think this is a resolution, I think it only requires to be read one time.
Right, okay, yeah, I was wondering, so will, it'll be read tonight and then action?
With the resolution at the next meeting, because we have that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, we can have the public hearing tonight and then y'all can take action on it at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
But that's all you gotta do.
That's right.
Carrie Ford?
I favor the first reading.
Mr. Galloway?
I'm okay with it.
Carrie Ford? Mr. Durn?
Carrie Ford.
Good deal. Next item is City Manager. Item six, found on page thirty-seven, discuss approval of the low-income housing tax credit support letter. Georgia Henderson?
All right, during the last meeting, we presented to you all the plan from KM Ventures, um, to build, um, if they awarded the housing tax credit, to build sixty-four, um, housing units in the community. Um, we held the public hearing, but tonight's agenda deals with your approval as the mayor and commission supporting the decision of our Douglas Geek Housing team to issue him, uh, the letter, our point letter that will go along with his application to Department of Community Affairs that he will submit sometime in May.
Mr. Taylor?
He said consent.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil? Mayor Procham?
Consent.
Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Mr. Durn?
Consent.
Thank you.
Next item, City Manager? All right, next item is item seven, found on page forty-two, discuss the state ARPA Oak Park System Connection Bid. Mike Hudson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Davis, uh, good evening, mayor and commission. This is, uh, the state ARPA pot of money that we received, it was only allocated for water and sewer infrastructure improvements. It was to the tune of four point two-two million dollars. Um, this is one of the projects we're gonna do out of that pot of money. This is actually taking the Oak Park or the old county water system we bought and tying it to our existing city system. One tie-in will be right past the bridge, past the middle school, the other tie-in will be back, uh, at the bridge coming in from two twenty-one, so that would have that total system looped in with our system. So does two things, gives us a little redundancy and also helps that system have more redundancy than they have at the present time. Uh, we had two bidders on the project, low bidder was, uh, RPI out of Aldosta. They're the current contractor we're using at the airport to do our water and sewer improvements out there. Um, they've done a couple of jobs for us, but we are recommended to take the low bid, one million thirteen thousand six oh nine forty. Um, we were budgeted about one point two on this, so we did come in under budget surprisingly with the way things are right now.
Good deal. Mr. Bailey? Your liaison leads through it?
Uh, it's free money, I consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil? Mayor Procham?
Well, my name is free money, but it's definitely a, an assistant called, uh, legislation that was in action. So definitely, uh, I consent to it.
Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Mr. Durn?
Consent.
Thank y'all.
Next item? There are no general comments and no updates. All right, good deal. So this is what we're gonna do, is we're gonna take a quick, two minutes, 'cause I gotta run out to the truck, I left my inhaler. So, I'll be right back, I gotta get my inhaler. On the regular session? Number six? Sorry about that, uh, the one person I do feel that walked to birth is my baby daughter Destiny, and she watches this and I'm up here coughing, she's gonna say, oh, didn't take her inhaler, did he? And trust me, you do not want Destiny on her case. We're ready? Good deal. All hearts and minds clear? Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor in Commission. Uh, this will serve as the regular meeting, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And the implication, we have, uh, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Taylor, make the introduction for us.
Please. Uh, at this time, I would like to introduce a individual that I have been knowing for over forty-five years. Um, been married to her for forty-five years. Um, she's a member of Asha Royal Temple. She's worked painful in the church, uh, as far as, um, ministering, uh, outreach minister. Everything that she provided her hands to do in the church, she, uh, uh, put a hundred and ten percent in. At this time, I would like to introduce you some and present to us, none other than my wife, Mr. Bob Jean Taylor.
Better known as the boss.
Let us bow our heads. Father God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, as once more and again, God, we come boldly before your throne. Asking you to have mercy on us, because we feel tonight that mercy suits the case. In the name of Jesus, Father, we pray that you'll just have your own divine way in these meetings. Or God, that you'll look on Mary Tony Park. Commissioner, the commissioners, or God, brothers Charlie Davis. God, that you'll look on them, God, as they go about to better the city. Or God, in the name of Jesus, Father, that you have your own divine way. God, that you'll touch each mindset. Or God, in the name of Jesus, because Father, you told us in your word that our ways are not your ways. Neither are those your throats. Even as the heavens are higher than the earth, so are ways in your ways. God, we realize and we see today that you are making progress in this city. And Father, I pray that you'll continue to make progress. Oh, God, I pray that you continually touch their minds. Oh, God, that they'll go forward in peace. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, that they are coming together as never before. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, because Father, we realize that that's what you calling for in these last days. God, that we'll come together as oneness. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, that we're baby to work together. Oh, God, that we can draw this world. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, oh, God, touch each mind. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, could anoint each mind. Oh, God, as they go forth, oh, God, and do your business, to do your works. Oh, God, I see that they have already done great works. Lord, this great city hall, oh, God, in the name of Jesus, oh, God, look on them tonight. Continually keep them. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, each one to have a part in this city hall. Each worker, oh, God, I pray that you'll touch their minds. Oh, God, in the name of Jesus, that they'll go forth and do their work. God, that you won't done in these lasting evil days. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. As always, we will have the dynamic Coffee High Navy Junior ROTC to lead us through the pledge. Tonight, we have with us Lieutenant Carrillo and Petty Officer Second Class Hernandez.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brotherhood for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over there, march left, right, forward, march left, right, right.
You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda. Come on, second. Been motioning second, any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion carries. Next item will be the second reading and public hearing of ordinance related to mobile vendors, special events, farmer's market, outdoor flea market slash open air market, and pop-up market. As always, the fastest reader in the city. Our city manager?
I'm city manager now?
Dolly! Was that, was that a come up or not?
It was a thank you, it was a pay raise. All right, I'll give a second reading and then we'll have the public hearing and then you can take action.
Okay.
Just be an ordinary man and see if those codes, chapter ten, businesses, article six, peddlers and solicitors, section ten dash two eleven, and adding article eight, mobile food vendors, section ten dash two thirty-two through two, ten, two forty-one, and adding article ten, outdoor open air markets, section ten, two fifty-three through ten, two ten, and adding article ten, farmers markets, sections ten, three eleven through ten, three thirteen, to amend and add and appeal all other orders in conflict here with and to buy for an effective date and other purposes. Also read for the first time in the regular meeting, Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Read second time, passed, ordained in the regular meeting, the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, and after property advertising, caption is acquired on the charge of City of Douglas, Georgia, on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. That is the second reading, it's about a twenty-seven page ordinance. But if there's anyone here tonight who has a public comment on this proposed ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name, and whatever comment you may have.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jack Klyot. I am a, uh, resident of the county, but I operate a business here, uh, Eight Finger Jack Stew and Q. Uh, and I do operate throughout the city of Douglas. First of all, let me commend you on doing the research that you needed to do to make this legislation omnipresent with everyone, okay? I, I, I think that, that looking into this and trying to do it the right way is probably the smartest thing that you could do. Um, I've been in the mobile food vending business since I fully retired from law enforcement with the City of Douglas. In all actuality, I was doing it before then. Um, and I've watched different municipalities that I've worked in, whether it be in the form of a fair or festival or set up for a special event or street vending. Um, and the regulation on this type of business varies from community to community, all right? Some of them, uh, they, they are doing everything they can to push mobile food vendors across the city limits or across the county line. They don't want them there, all right? But I've got news for everybody, food trucks aren't going away.
That's right.
Okay? They're not going away. If you look at one of the main industries that's in the city of Douglas and in Coffee County, it is the mobile trailers. Do you know what, sixty percent, and I checked with two salespeople and one of the manufacturers, sixty percent of the trailers they're making are mobile food vending trailers. So you can go ahead, if you want, and regulate them hard, which, you know, we, they have to be regulated. You've, you've got to have, the city's gotta get theirs, and they've got to do what's right. But I take a couple of issues with what I have read in these, uh, regulations. One of them is the thousand-foot distance from the, my vending window to the door of a brick-and-mortar restaurant. Okay? Now, if I wanna go down here and open a brick-and-mortar restaurant between McDonald's and Crystal, I can do it all day long. But let me be doing the same thing with wheels under it that has to leave every afternoon, and that's a no-no. Okay? I mean, there's a couple of attorneys in here, but I believe that's what is called arbitrary and capricious. All right? It is a double standard. It is a standard and it stifles competition. And it's, if we do a regulation like that against the mobile food vendors, what are we doing? We're putting the city on the side of one part of business and against the other. And eventually, now, you're not gonna get it from me, 'cause within three to five years or less, I'm retiring and retiring, and I'll never flip another burger or cook another, uh, Boston butt.
Your next point?
My next point, sir?
There, two.
Yes, sir, I apologize. Uh, the next thing that I wanted to, uh, come up with was that, I tell you what, evidently, thank you very much, all right? I appreciate your time, God bless each and every one of you, and I hope and pray that you come up to and make the best decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has a comment on this proposed ordinance? All right, at this time, I flow the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, this is ready for action.
All right, at this time, I entertain a motion. I do have a question before we take a vote.
Yeah, we got questions.
Well, I was not aware, I had not noticed that until Mr. Klock brought that up, a thousand feet. Where did that, where does that come from? How was that figure arrived, how do we arrive at that number?
That, that was in our existing ordinance, uh, we brought this number, we didn't bring that recommendation for change to you all.
So can we amend that?
That's about a quarter of a mile.
Well, we do, we probably have to close this all over.
No, you can amend it tonight.
You can, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I think that we should, because I don't think it needs to be stipulations on that, I'm sorry for that. But not, you know, stipulations on a food truck, if they meet the quota, they meet all the guidelines. I mean, I mean, I hate, you know, business is business, competition is competition. So I mean, at the end of the day, it is what it is, but I just don't want a thousand feet, that's a long way, too, so.
I think so as well. So as far as you're amending, uh, what distance are you recommending, or you're saying no distance?
I mean, if they certify, 'cause I mean, just like, for example, if you say a thousand feet and we have something at the park, the park, the pocket, when it's pocket park, and cross the street, it's parked. But if you wanted to have, you know, food trucks in such, you know, at the pocket park, they wouldn't exist because that's a thousand, right? Now, that's right there at that, and I hate that, but like you say, food trucks ain't going nowhere. That's, that's what a food truck is, so I just feel like we don't need to put stipulations on that. I mean, that's just.
So Commissioner Durn, you're saying that, um, as long as the individual that have food truck get permission from where he wanna sit up and he meets all the criteria, uh, then he's allowed to, you know, sit up there, you know?
Yeah, 'cause that's just like food trucks, they convenient, they pull up to your jaw, pull up to, I mean, even if we was having something at City Hall, Spivey Catfish is right there, uh, chicks and, chicks and fish is right there, and what if they wanted to have it at the gym?
We have food trucks in Tipton and they don't, if they, if they have a thousand-foot rule in their ordinance, they don't follow that, you know? And I don't, I have not heard anybody over there complaining about the competition or, you know?
So what's the recommendation?
I think you brought that in.
We're saying zero feet, five hundred feet, eight hundred feet, what's your recommendation? Because the, as it's been read, it's a thousand, what do you say? You open the floor.
I say like.
I'll say if they, if they meet criteria, I mean, 'cause it's gonna be always so, right? I mean, I'm, I'm just serious about it, if we have something at the gym, they couldn't do it at the gym.
But what's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be.
Zero? Are you saying zero?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd be comfortable with that, as long as they got permission to, to park the truck or the trailer there. Yeah.
Okay? Mayor Procham?
I don't.
You're good?
Mayor, I'm, I'm reading several things on the internet right now that say that most places, and I don't know the percentage, so I'm not quite in this, but a lot of places, it seems to be popular, uh, popular, wait, for town our size, might be five to six hundred feet. Would you be okay with that, maybe? Five hundred feet, we change it to that? Yes.
I think that, I think that.
Recommendation is zero feet.
Okay.
That's what the recommendation, so you're, you're proposing five hundred feet, but over here, there's three that says zero.
I'd like to be at less than five hundred, that's for sure.
You want it to be less than five hundred miles?
I think that would keep, that would keep these, these trucks or trailers strictly out of downtown Douglas. They wouldn't be to operate with five hundred foot rule.
Well, the challenge with downtown, like any city our size, is parking for.
Yep.
For not just food trucks, but for the restaurants that are already downtown.
Yep.
So I do believe, as far as the tax, downtown restaurants that are paying tax and stuff, I kinda, I kinda hesitate to.
So what, what, what's your recommendation?
Five hundred feet.
Zero, you're saying five hundred.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
I think I'm more partial to.
Mr. Taylor?
That would be a compromise.
I'm saying zero, as long as they have permission from the individual that own the area that they are sitting, sitting up at.
All right, that seems like.
And I, can I say something else?
Yes, sir.
Because in cities, in cities, I mean, I done been to cities, and downtown, it don't matter if it's a restaurant there, they have food trucks there all the time. And I just, I mean, as long as they meet the, the city requirements, they get a city license, help, uh, to safe serve, I mean, they, they meet that. I mean, this just what I, this is what we coming to, to new age, remote, as they can say, remote. That's even with jobs, remote. I mean, I hate it for the, you know, brick-and-mortar or whatever like that, but still, at the same time, we can job, and that's even with the workers. They go into electric, and they.
I think our population can support it.
Yeah.
I think.
Even in Atlanta, they could, they, they go, and they do their food trucks downtown.
All right, Mr. Durn, make your motion to amend the ordinance to zero feet, and we'll get a second and we'll go forward. If it carries, we'll move forward, if it doesn't, then Ms. McNeil can make her motion for five hundred feet.
Minutes ten thirty-seven.
Is there eight minutes?
Just for everybody's information, the paragraph that you would be amended is paragraph nineteen on page sixty of your agenda.
Paragraph what?
Paragraph nineteen on page sixty of the agenda. Now, if they're parking on a public street in front of a restaurant, they, they don't need permission to park on a public street, just so you know. Yeah.
Okay.
You say page sixty, what?
Paragraph nineteen.
I make a motion that we amend, uh.
Just take the ordinance.
The ordinance.
To zero feet.
To zero, to zero feet.
Uh, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motioned second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Posed.
Motion carries. Next item, Mr. City Manager? Oh, that's on me, I'm sorry. Second reading of the ordinance. Second reading of the ordinance to adopt.
Oh, I got, I got one more thing on these two.
As far as what?
Um, on the special events, some of the businesses have questions if they operate their mortal, and they sign up to for, um, an event, carnival, whatever like that, and they have a business license, and they were saying about a setup for food trucks and vendors that have a license, but may come from another city, or maybe from here, would they have to pay the regulatory fee in that?
That the, the, the person that's holding the event has to pay that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just the person, not the people that's got.
The event organizer.
Okay, okay, okay.
You're good? You're good?
Excuse me, Mayor Polk, Commissioner Bailey, did you vote against the motion?
I'm sorry, I did.
I know you did, but I was saying, Commissioner. Yes, I was sorry. You did, okay, sir, thank you.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next item, second reading in public hearing of ordinance related, oh, I'm sorry, second reading of the ordinance to adopt the schedule of fees for the Community Development Department.
All right, this, this will be the second reading, the schedule of fees, occupational tax certificates, regulatory fees, it's on page eighty of your agenda, often read for the first time by the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, Georgia on March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and made the second time passed ordaining by the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, after property advertising captain has acquired and in charge of the City of Douglas, Georgia on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and this is ready for action.
All right, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Some move?
Second. It's been motioned second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to oppose.
We have one opposed. Mayor Pro Temp, uh, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda items. Mister City Manager, would you please read off those items for transparency?
Mayor, we have four items coming over from the consent agenda, and they stated, I'll read those all. First item is approval of the March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes. Next is item two from the work session, approval of the City of Ethics Recertification Resolution. Uh, next item, uh, third item will be item six from the work session, approval of the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Support Letter, and the final item is approval of the state ARPA Oak Park System Connection Bid. Those are your four items.
At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda.
Some move?
It's been motioned second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is work session items brought forward. Mister City Manager, would you please lead us through it?
All right, we got three items coming forward. The first item will be item three, that was found on page twenty-eight, um, hold a public hearing for the alcoholic beverage application for Spivey Catfish House LLC doing business as Hardware House.
All right, Mayor Commission, this is an application for an alcoholic beverage ordinance for Spivey's Catfish House LLC doing business as Hardhead House, I mean Hardware House, and it's located at three ten South Peterson Avenue, which is right here where Lot's Hardware Store used to be, is coming to you on a recommendation by the staff that you issue that license. However, in connection with the issuance of that license, we must conduct a public hearing, so if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to comment on the proposed alcoholic beverage license for Catfish House LLC, please step to the podium, state your name and whatever comment you may have. Apparently, there's no one, I'll close the public hearing, and this is ready for action, Mister Mayor.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Some move?
It's been motioned.
She's second, because she said it with me.
Say again?
She said it with me, so that's second.
Okay, it's been motioned second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
All right, next item was item four, found on page thirty-one, uh, discuss and conduct a public hearing for the alcoholic beverage, uh, application for a Han nine LLC doing business as USA Discount Beverage. Wrong.
And just as before, uh, staff is recommending the issuance of the license for A Han, A Han nine LLC located at one twenty-one Gordon Avenue, uh, and in connection with that, we must have a public hearing, so if there's anyone here tonight who has a comment on this proposed issuance of the license, please step to the podium, state your name and whatever comment you may have. Apparently, there's no one, I'll close the public hearing, and this is ready for action, Mister Mayor.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Some move?
It's been motioned. Motion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Just for the citizens, a motion doesn't have to be second in the city of Douglas, it's just, we do it traditionally on laws. Next item?
All right, next item is item five, found on page thirty-four, um, conduct a, uh, a reading to discuss, to amend the community work program for the city of Douglas, uh, in the twenty-eighteen joint comprehensive plan.
All right, in connection with this, we must also have a public hearing, so if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to comment on the resolution to amend the community work program for the city of Douglas, Georgia, and the cities of, or county of Coffee, the cities of Ambrose, Broxton, Douglas, Nichols, uh, please step to the podium, state your name and whatever comment you may have, and next meeting we'll have, you'll be able to take action on this, but tonight, we're just having a public hearing. If there's anyone here who wishes to make a public comment? If apparently there is none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take action on this at the next meeting.
Good deal. Mister City Manager, any staff comment?
No, sir.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Second. It's been motioned second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.
And speaking, Mister Mayor, we didn't have any staff comment, so we didn't want our staff, Ms. Johnson and them, to inform the public about our ribbon cutting ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should inform the public about that. Action with Georgia Cities Week, the ribbon cutting will be at ten AM, and our, um, open house is from ten to two, so ask people to drop by and enjoy some refreshments and tour our new offices. Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
The.
Hey, Steve.
Hey, he's speaking before a second.